Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming to our public hearing. We have ordinance number... Do I have to take a roll call first?
No.
No. Okay. We're on ordinance 1312.
Ordinance number...
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Ordinance number 1312, an ordinance vacating Lee Avenue and a portion of Salem Drive as platted in Lane Crest addition, recorded in plat book nine, pages 29 to 30, located in Muncie, Delaware County, Indiana.
Is there anybody here to speak on ordinance 13-12?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council. Good evening. Scott Shockley, 400 South Walnut Street, on behalf of the petitioner. This matter involves a request that the council vacate two small segments of a platted street. I laid out on the bench before you convened two or three exhibits. One of them illustrates the segment of Lee Avenue and then a small segment of Salem Avenue. There's no road there now, but this was in the original plat. As you know, many of you were here when we... when you were kind enough to rezone this land back in December. And this is within the boundaries of the campus crest student apartment projects. We're on track to hope to close this and get started with construction, so we're hopeful the council can even possibly consider suspending its rules to consider this ordinance a second time this evening. The second illustration you have, which says Exhibit B, shows this location of this part of the plat in greater detail, and then it shows the rest of the old plat. The old plat was vacated. The third document you have is the Circuit Court decree in 1967, and I highlighted where the court at that time vacated the rest of Salem, and it vacated Revere, which is this curving road through the middle of the plat. I'm old, but I'm not that old. My defense to this is I was a sophomore at Central when this thing was... this plat was vacated, so I cannot explain to you why it was not vacated, this little portion we're asking you to consider vacating tonight, why that was not done as part of the overall process back in 1967. But in researching the title to get ready for closing, we determined it had not been, as you can see from that decree, and therefore, since it still exists on the plat that was recorded back in the '60s by Mr. Lane, it's one of the final things that needs to be done to clear the title so that this project may proceed. We're approaching prime construction season, and my client is obviously desirous of being able to close the purchase and put it out for bids and start construction. So that's really it. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Anybody on the council have any...
We don't ask questions.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll ask again at the meeting.
Okay. Beg your pardon.
Well, adjourn till 7:30 for our regular meeting. Thank you.
Thanks for coming to our May 7, 2012 city council meeting. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Doug Marshall, could you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have anybody say a prayer tonight from any churches. I'll ask Mr. Julius Anderson to say a little prayer for us.
Well, we thank you for this opportunity to come, to share with one another, but yet to take care of that of your business. We ask that you bless and touch every heart that's here tonight. Allow your word to go forward in each and every individual. We thank you for what you're doing for the city of Muncie. We thank you for the leadership that has been established, and we ask you, even right now, that you would bless us beyond even our own expectations, that you would lead, direct, and navigate us through the channels of life, that we will be one city, one country, and one nation. We ask these things in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
We have our citizens' recognition. Mr. Turner, could you come forward, please? And the presentation is going to be given by our councilman, Mr. Canassar.
Mr. Turner? I have a little something here to read about Mr. Turner and his service. On March 29, 2012, the City of Muncie Animal Shelter and the Muncie Police Department raided an alleged dogfighting training facility and confiscated 25 pit bulls that had been used for fighting. The dogs were all extremely neglected and required considerable rehabilitation. Upon hearing of the raid, local animal behaviorist Jim Turner contacted Animal Shelter Superintendent Phil Peckinpaul and offered his services in assisting with the dogs pro bono. Jim arrived at the shelter the following day and gained his work, earned the animals' trust, and building up their self-esteem. Jim grew a special bond with many of the dogs and helped assist in their placement into rehabilitation and rescue facilities all over the country. In the course of Jim's work, he developed a special bond with a particular dog named Wonder. Wonder had many wounds than any... Wonder had many more wounds than any other dog that was confiscated on the day of the raid, both physically and emotionally. Wonder refused to make eye contact with any human and spent his days powering in the back of his kennel. Jim worked extremely hard in building a relationship with Wonder, spending hours just laying and talking with the dog, and building up a form of trust in which Wonder had never experienced. Sadly, Wonder's wounds were too severe, and he was humanely euthanized by a veterinarian. He did take some comfort in his death, knowing that before he passed, he was able to feel the love of a human and was seeing them more than just an animal used for horrible blood support and fighting. Jim has some family with him tonight. Jim and his wife of 52 years, Linda, have lived in Muncie for over 30 years. Jim has four children, Terry, Aaron, Chris, and Jamie. Mr. Turner spent 40 years as a pastor, 20 years as a marriage and family therapist, 12 years as a law enforcement chaplain, and now operates an animal behaviorist consultant for his own business, Animal Talk. Jim studied animal behaviorism and graduated from Julie Shaw and Karen Pryor Academy, finishing 90 percent... finishing in the top 90 percentile. On behalf of the city council, we'd like to present with a citizenship award, and thank you for your service to the community. I thank you.
Mr. Turner, would you like to say anything to the audience tonight?
Excuse me?
Would you like to say anything to the audience tonight?
The story of Wonder has practically gone viral. People from other states call me. One man took Wonder's ashes and had him cremated and presented him to me in a lovely urn. The best outcome of the story is that it will be Wonder who puts the perpetrator in prison. That's the good outcome of it.
Could I have Corey Mendel, Shane Mann, Daniel Powell, and Deputy Ken Lopez come Eddie, could you come up here also? I would like to recognize all four of those people. The newspaper only, I think, mentioned two of them, but I'm going to read a little letter here. "The city council would like to recognize the efforts of Muncie firefighters Shane Mann, Corey Mendel, and Daniel Powell, and well as Delaware County Sheriff Ken Lopez for the bravery they demonstrated April 9, 2012, as they attempted a water rescue at Fudd's Lake. Before the dive team could get assembled, Lopez, Mann, Mendel, and Powell willingly took a calculated risk by diving 15 feet into 50-degree water without appropriate diving equipment in an attempt to rescue someone from the vehicle. We often take for granted our firefighters, police officers, EMTs, and deputies who are willing to put themselves in danger to protect the lives of others. Everyone present from both the Muncie Fire Department and Delaware County Sheriff's Department should be commended for their actions that day. The council would like to offer our sincere gratitude for what they did that day and what they are willing to do every day." Thank you, gentlemen.
President Dishman, I'd just like to say, we always try to act from the team aspect, and there were many people out there, whether they were on the bank throwing rope bags, watching or spotting the guys that were out in the water, both Delaware County Police and Muncie Fire Department. There were a lot of people involved, and these were just a few of the guys that were up front. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the show. Moving right along. Roll call, please.
Quirk?
Here.
Dishman?
Here.
Poe?
Present.
Powell?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Canassar?
Here.
Marshall?
Here.
Gregory?
Present.
Anderson?
Present.
Nine yes.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Second.
Doug Marshall?
Councilman Marshall.
Marshall?
Yes.
Canassar?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Quirk?
Yes.
Gregory?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Okay. Do we have any committee reports tonight?
Mr. President, this time I would like to invite the Animal Shelter Superintendent, Mr. Phil Peckinpaul, to come and talk about our two appointments to the new... our new Animal Care Commission.
Hello. Phil Peckinpaul, Superintendent of the Muncie Animal Shelter. We have two really great appointments to make to the Muncie Delaware County Animal Care Commission Board. One of those appointments is here tonight; the other could not make it, but is very excited. One appointment is Dennis Lee Tyler, and the other appointment is Mike Brown of Care Animal Hospital. Mike's been a practicing vet in Muncie for over 10 years and has great experience, and Dennis brings a lot of knowledge, too. He has some dogs and has worked with me a lot at the animal shelter volunteering, and I look forward to working with them in the future, so I really hope you guys accept these appointments, and they'll be really great.
While you're up here, could you also just go over the entire roster of the commission?
Sure. Mayor Tyler's appointment was Dr. Teresa Calvert from Westview Animal Hospital. The county commissioner's appointment was Don Dunick. The county council's appointment was Dr. John Boyce of Boyce Animal Hospital and Sarah Beach. Your guys' appointments, obviously, Dennis Lee Tyler and Mike Brown. And the health department will rotate between Josh Williams, Donna Wilkins, and Christiana Mann, so they'll rotate in proxy. And our first meeting is going to be this Wednesday, actually, at 4:30 on the second floor here, so... Anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. So, at this time, I would like to make a motion to appoint Dennis Lee Tyler and Dr. Michael Brown to the Animal Care Commission.
Second.
Motion is to appoint Mr. Dennis Lee Tyler and who is Dr.?
Dr. Michael Brown.
Dr. Michael Brown to the appointment. Roll call, please.
Poe?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Quirk?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Canassar?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Gregory?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Thank you.
I want to recognize Tyler, baby, sir. Pardon? Recognize Dennis Tyler, since he is the lead.
Mr. Tyler, would you like to come up and speak on that?
Okay. We understand.
Moving on to ordinance previously introduced, ordinance 7-12.
Ordinance 7-12, an ordinance making transfers within the city court fund. Mr. President, I move to adopt ordinance 7-12.
Second.
Roll call, please. Hang on a minute.
I'm sorry. Good evening. I'm Diana Bennington. I'm judge in the Muncie City Court, and I'm back tonight to respectfully request the final approval of ordinance 7-12, which would transfer $1,000 from the instruction fees fund to the office supplies fund.
Does anybody wish to speak on that?
Will that be enough money for you?
Well, it will be. We were behind initially in the budget because there was a bill that went unpaid from last year, so we needed to recover that, plus we do have an increased need for supplies, so it should be sufficient for this year, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is this just office supplies, or...?
It is office supplies, yes. Yeah, things like envelopes and, you know, different things like that.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Roll call, please.
Marshall?
Yes.
Canassar?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Quirk?
Yes.
Gregory?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Thank you all.
Orderance 8-12.
Ordinance 8-12, an ordinance of the City of Muncie, Indiana, to amend Title 11, Chapter 115, Section 15.10 of the Muncie Code of Ordinances, Title, Report to Police. Mr. President, I move to adopt ordinance 8-12.
Second.
Do we have anybody here to talk on the ordinance tonight?
Good evening. I'm Mark Omar. I'm the deputy chief of the Muncie Police Department. I don't have anything to add unless you guys have questions about it.
How excited are you to get this tool?
It's going to help us out a lot with our investigations.
Anybody else wishing to speak on ordinance 8-12? Roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Quirk?
Yes.
Gregory?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Canassar?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
New ordinances. Ordinance 9-12.
Ordinance 9-12, an ordinance to amend the City of Muncie comprehensive zoning ordinance from the BV Variety Business Zone to the R5 Residence Zone on premises located at 722 East Main Street, Muncie, Indiana, applicant youth opportunity center. Mr. President, I move to introduce ordinance 9-12.
Second. Anybody here to speak on it?
Good evening. Ed Canassar, 2304 West Purdue. I represent the parties in the transaction, and it's a request for changing the zoning back to residential zoning in a property that was formerly the YSB building, and it's going to be returned to a single-family residence. I think, Jerry, you indicated that the plan commission had received a favorable recommendation.
Received a favorable recommendation. Does anybody else like to talk on 9-12?
I got a couple of questions. Was that... is that still operate... was that still operating?
No.
No. So because of the... Pardon me?
As the YSB?
Right.
No, it's closed. Take five, another non-for-profit, is there just on a monthly basis.
So was that originally moved out to the YOC?
I don't know their motivations. I just have the property listed. The YSB is closed.
All right. Okay.
Does that include the property next door as well that was also owned by the YSB? The rezoning, or is it just...
No, just 722 at this time.
Anybody else wishing to speak on 9-12?
I have a question. You may have said this, and I didn't catch it, but my understanding that the person that's interested in purchasing the property wants to turn it back into a single-family housing residence?
Yes.
Okay. That would be good for the neighborhood.
If that's the case, why aren't we taking it to R4 instead of R5?
R5 conforms to the other properties in the immediate area.
Anybody else wishing to speak?
Lynn Thornburg, 311 North Vine in the Neighborhood Association. I'm not real familiar with all the background of this, but I know that it's favorable in our neighborhood. They strip-zoned when they put Highway 32 down through the middle of our neighborhood, so variety business is on either side of that street, and so what's happened is, a lot of businesses kind of came up in the '60s, and that used to be the Stevens Funeral Home, so it, you know, it was kind of... it was a home, but then they had the funeral home. Then the Youth Service Bureau had it, I think, from the '70s on. They were pretty good neighbors, and then now the YOC has it, and I know it's not viable anymore for that use, and like someone else mentioned, that there is a buyer that would... that wants it, but they want it restricted. And I think R5 is... our setbacks in the neighborhood, R5 fits better with it, but it's like almost a, you know, minimal setback, and that's right on the edge of the property line, and so I think that's one reason they probably would have done R5 also. But it's... our neighborhood loves that, and we would like to... I mean, just like she brought up, it would be nice to downsize a lot of the single-family homes or the homes up and down that street, but we'd like this to be passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? All in favors, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If the council would be willing, I'd like to ask for a suspension of the rules to proceed with the final passage of this tonight.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules in a second. Roll call, please.
Marshall?
Yes.
Canassar?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Quirk?
Yes.
Gregory?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Thank you. Now we have the motion to adopt 9-12.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
You made a motion.
Yeah, you gotta make a motion.
I make the motion to adopt ordinance 9-12. Second.
Sorry, Jerry. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Quirk?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Canassar?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Gregory?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Canassar?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Gregory?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Canassar?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Gregory?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Quirk?
Yes.
Gregory?
Yes.
Canassar?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Gregory?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Canassar?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Quirk?
Yes.
Canassar?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Gregory?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Canassar?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Canassar?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Canassar?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Canassar?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Canassar?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Dishman?
Yes.
Anderson?[1693.12] The district spends over a hundred thousand dollars a year cleaning lines that could be handled relatively easily by some of the few producers who discharge large amounts of grease. We have begun implementing this program that was actually passed last year and we've learned that there are a couple of things that we need to improve in the ordinance. The first is what we refer to as a grease interceptor or grease trap. Those are two different units, but they're defined interchangeably when we go out and talk to people. One refers to a ten to thirty gallon tank that sits underneath a sink and is a maximum of a few hundred dollars to install. The other is a thousand gallon tank that sits underground and can be many thousands of dollars to install. Our intention was to let the restaurants decide which is most effective for their specific use, not to require everyone to install thousands of dollars of equipment. We want the ordinance to reflect that. And in item two, we have made a change that amounts to adding the final three words there, or fog trap. The change is simple, but it is very important to clarify, I believe, our goal. And the third change that goes very closely in hand with this, we've also noticed that many facilities are able to control grease without using any sort of specific equipment. They can do this through what we call best management practices. It could be simple things like serving food that is on paper trays, having a limited amount of dishes. The intent here is just to make sure that we're giving everyone the flexibility to come up with unique ways rather than trying to fit everyone into a one-size-fits-all solution where they feel like they're forced to install equipment that they don't need. That's not the intention, the intention here is just to be able to address problems where blockages are caused. If you're not causing a problem, we do not need you to install unnecessary equipment. So item three, on the back here, let me read this, allows an existing facility that is able to demonstrate that they can use a trap or interceptor or best management practices to continue doing so. So these two changes are designed to make sure that they have more flexibility than they do now. And again, if you have any questions on these two, I'd be happy to answer them. We're just asking this be public notice and then voted at the, on at the next meeting.
How do you, how does the Bureau of Water Quality go about having the conversation with the restaurant? Have you already had the conversation with the restaurants, like they're anticipating this?
Yes, we, yes, we've had some and that's where we've learned most of this is we've gone out and talked to them and of course, most will say we don't have grease is the first thing, or we don't discharge grease and we'll show them a few pictures of lines being clogged. But many of them are right, they, they do not, if they don't have dishes, there are many ways and they're constantly adding ways to control grease in their own restaurants that are much more cost-effective than adding a trap or adding an interceptor. And that's fine. It, it allows them to make the decisions on their own of how they're going to control it. And again, the only time we come back then is if there is an actual blockage that's going to cost, again, the thousands of dollars for us to clean. It is much more effective that that is removed at the facility than it is once it gets into the sanitary lines.
So is your office, like the sole office that goes out to monitor this, or do you do it like with other offices, like the Health Department or the Building Commissioner or something?
We, we are working with the Health Department, they will also be inspecting some, we accepted the onus primarily because this is very parallel to the pre-treatment program that we have for industries and also because the problem is uniquely the sanitary districts. It, it does not have to be a health issue. I mentioned the money that can be involved in cleaning lines. Our sewer maintenance crew does a very good job of identifying these clogs and cleaning them before they become a problem, but if they don't, they can lead to backups into basements, they can lead to raw sewage being discharged into the river via combined sewer overflows. So it becomes a water quality issue secondarily, but primarily it is a maintenance issue for the sanitary district.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
I was, I just, it's not so much a speech, I just wanted to make a comment. I find a hundred thousand dollars is very excessive, but I do understand how that works and, and having that trap there to catch all that grease and trucks coming sucking that stuff out of there and getting it. But evidently, back at the plant where it all comes back to, that's where the big cost factor is for you. How big is that, that pipe that comes through there with all that?
Well, if it makes it that far, the pipe that's closer to the plant is sufficiently large enough. The problem is that especially older lines, combined lines, those are too small. Without getting, I guess I'll get into the technicality of a little bit, but when the grease is going down a drain at a restaurant, it is still essentially grease.
Grease, right.
When it passes down and travels another hundred to two hundred feet, it goes through a process called saponification. That grease actually starts to combine with the hardness in the water, makes a material that's very similar to bone and it starts to constrict that line. And then the normal ways you use to clean grease aren't effective and we have to use large equipment and a lot of chemicals to clean that, so neither of those are, are fun jobs.
Yeah, I know, yeah. Thank you, just curious.
I, I do have a question, you said you requested three amendments, is, is that already in here?
Yes, they're all there.
That's what I thought.
Yes, they're all there, yeah.
So this is already amended, like you want it?
Everything is written exactly how I would like, yeah, just the explanation.
I think he, he was referring to that they were amending chapter fifty-three.
Okay, well, I, I guess I just didn't catch that, because he, he was requesting three amendments and.
Alter chapter fifty-three, correct, yeah, just three small changes.
But they've already done?
They are in there correctly in front of you, yes.
Anybody from the audience wishing to speak on ten dash twelve? All in favors, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Thank you. Ordinance eleven dash twelve.
Ordinance eleven dash twelve, an ordinance of the City of Muncie, Indiana consenting to issuance by Delaware County, Indiana of certain economic development revenue bonds for an economic development project within the corporate limits of the City of Muncie. Mr. President, I move to introduce ordinance eleven dash twelve.
Second.
Good evening, Council Bruce Baldwin with the Economic Development Commission and the City of Muncie and Redevelopment Commission and a little bit of Delaware County. This ordinance is asking the council to approve the issuance of bonds by the Delaware County Redevelopment Commission. The reason this is being done is this intersection, State Road thirty, three thirty-two and Nebo Road was annexed by the city after the Delaware, the Delaware County's Nebo Road TIF district was approved. So this requires, anytime there's an action like this, it requires council approval. Council, the county has been requested to issue the bonds in an amount not to exceed two and a half million dollars. The County Redevelopment Commission has pledged TIF revenues toward the repayment of that bond. The county is required to obtain your consent and this consent will result in no financial liability or responsibility on the part of the city and that's spelled out in your ordinance. This project secured previous approvals by the Delaware County Redevelopment Commission in a declaratory resolution by the Metropolitan Plan Commission approving the order of this plan, indicating that this plan conforms to the overall development plan for the county. It's also been, that was March one, it's also been approved by the Delaware County Board of Commissioners and then came back to the Redevelopment Commission with a public hearing. So I would ask that you, council hereby introduce ordinance eleven dash twelve and provide consent for this project to proceed forward. I'd answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the council? Ms. Gregory?
In the third where, and I don't think this makes any difference in the long run, but, and I, I don't think it needs to be amended, but maybe it does. In the third whereas statement, in the third line, I think that should be from rather than form.
Whereas the County Redevelopment Commission, that third?
Increment revenues from rather than form. As I said, I don't think it makes any difference, because that's not what we're acting on.
Well, I think, I think what that's saying is it's, it's, oh, yes, it is, from, I thought, yeah.
All from, yeah.
That's correct. You must have been an English teacher at one point.
I was. Once an English teacher, always.
Yeah, my daughter recalled that, too.
Huh? No. I mean, I don't think it has any.
Do we have any other questions tonight, Mr. Baldwin?
Any other grammatical corrections? I didn't write this ordinance off.
It would have been right.
Oh, absolutely.
He didn't pass.
I just had to read it a few times, I think, well, that can be right.
Right.
Thank you, Bruce. All in favors, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Thank you. Ordinance twelve dash twelve.
Ordinance twelve dash twelve and ordinance amending ordinance thirty-one dash eleven, the maximum salaries of each and every appointed officer, employee, deputy, assistant, departmental, and institutional head of the City of Muncie, Indiana included herein for the year twenty twelve.
Hello, Audrey Jones, the City Controller.
You have a second.
Okay, sorry.
Well, you don't have a motion yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. President, I make the motion to introduce ordinance twelve dash twelve.
Second.
I talked with Phil, the HR Director, we need to get a salary ordinance. You guys passed a consolidation back in March, April, for the animal shelter and to pay those employees, we need a salary ordinance in place. And also, we are being audited right now and through that audit, we have discovered that to pay the merit commission, you have to do overtime, so the pay has been lowered to seven twenty-five to bring it back up to pay, so that we're not paying like twenty dollars an hour.
Right. So are you saying it was more, now you're making it less?
Right.
Always wondered about that.
But do you, excuse, do you need to do that, because the salary ordinance just says that's the maximum you can pay? You can pay less than that.
I, I had spoke with Joe on it, I believe that we needed, when I had spoke with the auditor, she had stated that you needed something in place to show what the pay was going to be, so I assumed the salary ordinance would fix that situation so that we weren't paying your nineteen dollars an hour.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Yes, I do have some other questions. This salary increase for the superintendent is twenty-five percent increase over what was approved last summer and I'm just curious how other department heads feel about that since they had not had raises at all for five years.
There hasn't been any discussion at all.
The other, the other thing is the two animal control drivers, these are new positions, there is no job description. I'm curious why, if you have a designation of a one and a two, why the hourly rate is the same? And are these covered by the union? And are they included in the contract?
All full-time employees are covered by the union.
But not stated by position? Okay. Are there job descriptions? I'm sure there is.
Sarah Beach, Personnel Director for the City of Muncie, there are no job descriptions for those positions at this time, but we're working on getting that done. The union contract states that all full-time city employees are members of the union, so yes.
Okay, so they're not specified by job, then?
No, if the contract specifically states that all full-time city employees are covered by the union.
Okay.
Unless they're exempt by, they're exempt employees or management employees or something like that.
Why are, why is the salary the same for the two positions? I assume with a one and a two, there's some degree of difference in their duties.
We just, we just wrote it that way in the ordinance, it's two, we have that in other departments, too, whether it's Secretary one, Secretary two, they're the same exact pay.
They're the same exact position. Phil Packenpaul, Animal Shelter Superintendent, they're the two exact same positions or two, as discussed in the resolution, when we presented that last month, you know, this is providing more coverage. With that, you get two more full-time drivers and that's what these, these two positions are, they're two full-time drivers that patrol the City of Muncie and Delaware County.
But what distinguishes the two? Why do you, why are we calling them a one and a two?
There is absolutely no distinction.
Why won't we, why wouldn't we go with just one position?
Well.
The, the ordinance, the salary ordinance just says this is how much we're going to pay this position, it's not how many you have in there, that's the budget.
Yeah, I, I didn't write the salary, I didn't write the ordinance, so I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know.
I mean, I can't see going to the trouble of creating two job descriptions when you really only need one.
Right, yeah, it's the exact same job. One comes in an hour later and stays an hour later.
Oh, my gosh, okay.
What did, what, what did you say?
One comes in an hour later and stays an hour later than the other one.
Any other questions?
I might make a, I would like to make a comment.
And, and Mr. Packenpaul, you may want to talk to this also, that with the superintendent, the responsibilities have significantly changed. He's now responsible for the animal care of the entire county and he is a twenty-four-seven on-call, and I realize other department heads are on-call also, but I would say that his is, is very frequent, like he's been given the responsibility of having to take calls from nine-one-one, they contact him with every emergency call concerning an animal and he has to make a decision as to what has to be done and, and so I would say that his responsibilities have changed significantly as far as the pay increase.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, thank you.
We might, did you want to speak to the thing about the appropriations?
I had spoke with the auditor, as long as we aren't in the red at any, at the end of the year, we're, we're fine with our appropriations.
And you had said that it was your understanding that you could pay the salaries out of the budget that you have?
That is correct.
And that your plan was to, within the next month or two, do an additional appropriation that covered a number of?
Right, unemployment wasn't budgeted and perf wasn't budgeted for all the budgets across the entire city, so I'm going to do an additional appropriation for a number of things, I just, I feel that it would be better to do one big one instead of try to come back every month and fix some of the budget issues.
Did you, when you talked with the auditor, did you make it clear that these are new, new positions that were not in last year's budget?
Yes, I did.
And they said it was okay to pay without an appropriation?
We have salaried appropriations.
But not for those line items?
We do have salaries, though, personal services, they're just categorized differently. We do have personal services for salaries. We don't have specific line items for those positions, but we do have salaries budgeted.
So which lines would you be taking it from?
We could take.
You have nothing for animal attendant, there's nothing there, kennel technician doesn't have anything, the only thing you have is part-time investigator and superintendent. There is no line item appropriation for those.
Right, I understand that, but what I was saying, as long as those positions aren't in the red at the end of the year, they can be paid.
I disagree.
Okay.
I think she knows what she's doing.
Do we have anybody else wishing to speak?
I just like to say one thing, I'm sure you know, I, I'm sure you are familiar and you know what you're doing as far as, as this ordinance goes, am I correct in saying that?
That is correct.
Okay.
Anyone else?
See no problem with it?
Thank you.
I do have one more question, is this something that needs to be, the rule suspended so it can be done right away?
Yes, I would like, we have the agreement that was made with the county, the positions were supposed to start May the first.
Oh.
Should this not have been done then before now?
We've already received money from the county, forty thousand dollars for these positions.
Anyone else?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
We need to, we need to introduce it first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All in favors, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Mary?
I would, now do I introduce that?
Yeah.
At this time, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance twelve dash twelve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Canasta?
No.
Well, it's done.
It's done. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Mary, could you have a special meeting this Friday on this twelve dash twelve? Okay, moving on to ordinance thirteen dash twelve.
Ordinance thirteen dash twelve, an ordinance vacating Lee Avenue and a portion of Salem Drive as plotted in Lane Crest Edition, recorded in plat book nine, pages twenty-nine to thirty, located in Muncie, Delaware County, Indiana. Mr. President, I move to introduce ordinance thirteen dash twelve.
Members of the council, good evening, Scott Shockley, four hundred South Walnut Street on behalf of the petitioner. We are requesting that the council.
on behalf of the petitioner. We are requesting that the council vacate a part of the original Lane Crest plat from the 1960s. This is an effort to, it's really the last public council or commission approval to proceed with the Campus Crest Student Housing Project. In March, this went before the Plan Commission received favorable recommendation, went to the BZA, received unanimous approval from the BZA. But in researching the title to prepare for closing, it was discovered that in 1967, when this plat was vacated, these two little strips of Lee and Salem in the southeast, I guess it would be corner of the plat, were not vacated back when the court took, vacated everything else in this property. And so this, although there is no road there now, it was recorded as a plat when the original plat was recorded in the 60s. And we would request your action, please, to vacate it. And we're hopeful that if it's possible, that that could proceed this evening so that we can close and the construction can proceed during the upcoming favorable construction season. Thank you.
Anybody wishing to speak on 13-12? Anybody from the councils wishing to speak on 13-12? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye.
Second.
Oh, I thought somebody seconded it.
I will.
Sorry.
All opposed, say aye. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I could motion, make a motion, we suspend the rules on ordinance 3-12.
13-12?
Second, 13.
There's been a motion and a second on 13-12. Roll call, please. For suspending the rules.
I did. Councilperson Powell.
I was gonna say, I did too.
This is on suspending the rules.
Just to make sure.
Okay.
Marshall?
Yes.
Canadse?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hau?
Yes.
Deuce?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Quirk?
Yes.
Gregory?
Yes.
Moving on to new resolutions, new resolutions. Oh, I'm sorry.
Because the rule had been suspended, so now we move to introduce it. Mr. President, I move to adopt ordinance 13-12.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Poe?
Yes.
Hau?
Yes.
Quirk?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Canadse?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Gregory?
Yes.
Deuce?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Moving on to resolutions 7-12.
Resolution 7-12, a resolution approving deduction from assessed value of new real property improvements in an already declared economic revitalization area. Now, McGunigal?
McAdams?
McGunigal? McGunigal. Engine Performance. Mr. President, I move to adopt resolution 7-12.
Second.
Do we have anybody from McGunigals here tonight to speak on this?
Good evening. My name is Duane McGunigal, excuse me. Owner of McGunigals Engine Performance. I'll give you a little overview of our business. We specialize in oval track racing engines. That's probably 80% of our business. The other 20% is restoration and your OEM vehicles, engines. What, the type of engine we specialize in is basically what we call a short track late model. It's one step underneath NASCAR. And some of our current customers are NASCAR racers. They use these as their play toys or for their sons and daughters to move up. Current customers are Matt Kenseth, Kyle Busch, Bill Elliott, and some others utilize our engines. Our restoration type things, we deal in all of your old type cars, V-tailed Jaguars, 1938 Studebaker, straight Buick. Do all types of things like that, with especially type thing. And our goal is to increase our current business and then expand and grow in other areas. Currently, on the increasing, we want to, we actually moved quite a bit into Canada, want to increase our business in Canada. And South Africa is an area that we're going to in November, which is all this same type of thing. It's growing across the world, basically, so we're trying to increase that market. As far as growing in the new business, of course, everyone knows that internet sales is a very big area. And we have a very good name across the country as far as our business, so we're going to private label a lot of these parts and things that we manufacture and buy, and really grow that marketplace there. You know, we have a lot of sales now without even making any effort to do that, so we feel there's a lot of growth there. We're purchasing some other equipment. One's called a chassis dyno, which you basically pull your entire vehicle on with drag racing, your street rods, your import tuning. That's a very big market that's there, that, you know, 100 to 200 mile radius, you have to go to to accomplish some of these things. So we feel there's a lot of growth and potential there. So with your help, we can do that. Any questions I can answer?
Mr. President, I have some questions. I got a question on this. It says that your, your address is 400 West Ontario, Muncie 4733, during the above described period. Now, what?
I'm not sure that that's the new address that we'll be moving to. Our current address is 1726 North Elm.
Okay, so?
We still, we'll still own the North Elm address.
It's, what was the Elm address?
1726 North Elm is our current address.
But you're going to be staying permanently at 400 West Ontario?
Yes, that will be the new larger building that we're moving to.
Because it says during the above described period.
Well, it'll be a trans, definitely a transition period in moving everything and setting up everything.
And then also, it says purposes of allowing partial abatement, so you're not asking for a full abatement?
Well, Bruce, can you help me on that? Because I, I'm not an expert on this aspect.
Right.
This is the way all these resolutions are put together. The partial abatement means they're not getting 100% abatement year after year after year.
Okay.
It's on that schedule.
Right.
And as far as the address, they're moving to 400 West Ontario Drive. They're presently on North Elm.
Right. Okay, I understand then what, what that means. Thank you.
It says here that you will, you have nine employees right now. Are those full-time?
Yes.
Employees? And then you'll be adding six?
We, I mean, we feel six is definitely a number we can accomplish.
What kind of skill set do those people, will you be looking for?
We prefer secondary education. Probably over 50% of my workforce either have a degree in, a four-year degree or a two-year associate-type degree.
And how will you advertise for those?
We, we will use the unemployment service, and then there's a lot of different specialty type, you know, through the schools and different things. We can get employees through that. But we do want to get people with secondary educations.
What kind of schedule for hiring those additional people? Like, you know, of the six years, at what point can we expect those hires, do you think?
We anticipate probably two the first year, and if things go well, I'd like to get the next four the second year. We hope to do more. We're trying to be conservative in our numbers. You know, it just depends on the marketplace, but our market has stayed strong. When the economy has dropped, you know, of course, ours suffered a little bit, but it's stayed very strong throughout, through everything.
I noticed that on the one question, only 13, or 25% of your employees are Muncie residents. Do you see that changing?
Yes. I mean, we've talked with other people here, and we expect to hire more from the local area.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anybody from the audience wish to speak? Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Quirk?
Yes.
Deuce?
Yes.
Hau?
Yes.
Hau?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Canadse?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Gregory?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Nine yes.
I wanted to let everybody know that it had a favorable recommendation from the Tax Abatement Committee also. A resolution 8-12.
Resolution 8-12, a resolution approving deduction from assessed value of new manufacturing equipment in an already declared economic revitalization area. McGunigal Engine Performance. Mr. President, I move to adopt resolution 8-12.
Second.
Anybody wishing to speak on 8-12? Mr. McGunigal?
All three of these resolutions are basically the same project. The first one was real estate for six years. This one is equipment for five years, and the 9-12 is IT equipment for three years. So Duane can answer other questions, or I can answer questions, or if there are none.
They're all for many years?
I'm sorry.
What did you say?
The real estate, 7-12 was for six years. 8-12 is on equipment, and that's for five years. And 9-12 is on IT equipment, computers and so on, and that's for three years.
Do we have anybody wishing to speak on 8-12? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Quirk?
Yes.
Deuce?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Hau?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Canadse?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Gregory?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Resolution 9-12.
Resolution 9-12, resolution approving deduction from assessed value of new information technology equipment in an already declared economic revitalization area. McGunigal Equipment Performance. Mr. President, I move to adopt resolution 9-12.
Second.
Anybody wishing to talk on 9-12? Anybody from the council?
I just want to make a comment. I just want to say thank you for staying in our community and continuing to invest here and to help provide an opportunity for people to have employment. So thank you for that. And I also, I read one of your emails where you were, or it may not have came from you, it may have come from an employee, but they were very anxious to give people the opportunity to come out and visit if people were interested, and that was a very nice gesture.
Oh, yeah.
If you get any NASCAR guys coming to town, appreciate if you give us a call.
My husband would be very, and my son-in-law.
Roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gregory?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Canadse?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Hau?
Yes.
Yes.
Deuce?
Yes.
Quirk?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Thank you, Mr. McGunigal. We always appreciate good business here at Muncie. Hope you all the best in the world out there at the airport. Resolution 10-12.
Resolution 10-12, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Muncie adopting the Americans with Disabilities Act standards for accessible design and guidelines for pedestrian facilities in the, in the public right-of-way. Mr. President, I move to adopt resolution 10-12.
Second.
Marta Moody with the Delaware-Muncie Metropolitan Plan Commission. And I am actually representing this as a part of the federal transportation planning that our office does as an MPO. And the work in the planning arena allows Duke Campbell to be able to do his federal aid projects for the City of Muncie, as well as the county to do their projects on the bridges in the City of Muncie. And this resolution, as well as the next resolution, are the result of some new requirements from Federal Highway and the Indiana Department of Transportation asking that each municipality that receives federal funds actually adopt, officially adopt the ADA standards. And also, in terms of the next resolution, adopt a resolution officially designating who the ADA coordinator will be for the municipality, as well as adopting procedures for grievances. And so if you've got any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but the, and I've worked with Sarah Beach and Duke, and we, we are all asking, right, for their approval on this.
Do we have any questions of the council? Anybody from the audience wishing to speak? Thank you, Marta. Roll call, please.
Hau?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Canadse?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Gregory?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Quirk?
Yes.
Deuce?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Resolution 12-11-12.
Resolution 11-12, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Muncie, Indiana, designating the Americans with Disabilities Act Coordinator and adopting procedures. Mr. President, I move to adopt resolution 11-12.
Second.
Anyone wishing to speak on that tonight? Anybody here to speak on that tonight?
I have some questions for somebody. That would be Marta.
Marta Moody?
On the, in Exhibit B, number three, says the ADA coordinator of designee, I think it should be or.
Oops.
Doesn't make a lot of sense otherwise. And then my next question is, what happens after step six? If the board of works person says whatever, and the complaintant still isn't satisfied, what's the next step? Does it go to the mayor? Does it go to the Human Rights Commission? Does it go to?
No, if they have not found resolution under the local grievance procedure, then they would be dealing with the Department of Justice.
So there's no mediator capability then, in this?
Yeah. And Yvonne deals with this as well, but the, if it cannot be resolved locally, then they would, and you might want to step in and say, make sure I'm saying this right. But it's my understanding that then they're, by law, their recourse is through the Department of Justice.
Yvonne Thompson, Director of the Muncie Human Rights Commission. Any complaints that come in from the public dealing with ADA, we deal with those directly with the Department of Justice. So we would monitor any complaints that come to the city or to the county. And that's, that's our function, is to monitor and to make sure any issues of this type are handled, so.
Any other questions from the council? Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the audience?
I'd like to amend Exhibit B, number three, to read the ADA Coordinator or Designee.
You say or?
Or.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Is this only amendment?
For the amendment.
Yeah.
Quirk?
Yes.
Deisman?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Canaxer?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Gregory?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Mr. President, I move the adoption of Resolution eleven dash twelve as amended.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Marshall?
Yes.
Canaxer?
Yes.
Pow?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Deisman?
Yes.
Gregory?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Quirk?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Going into, uh, other business, do we have any other business out here tonight? Do we have, do we have a sign-up sheet?
We have. Nobody signed.
Man, that's scary. At this time, I'd like to, uh, oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to find out, um, and I was going to ask the mayor, but it looks like he had other, um, had to take off or something.
No, he's right over there.
Oh, yes, okay. Um, I guess I have a question. Um, if we could, do you have the full edit plan that you have, um, put out there? I mean, I know the newspaper had partial, part of it, but is there a full plan that the council could look at? It has filed, been filed with the clerk's office? Okay. Can, can we get copies of those, of that, of the edit plan? Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Campbell, could you come up for a second, please? I wanted to publicly thank you for, you and your department's speedy response to my pothole notifications. My problem is I drive around and I hit them or I skirt them and then I can't remember to write them down and so sometimes there's a lag time for it and get that done, but I do appreciate your, your working on them. I do have a question, though, on what's the timeline on getting the intersections along Madison fixed? I mean, it's been several weeks and I know weather's a part of it and you probably have multiple contractors, but they just seem like accidents waiting to happen.
They are. They are. It, it's a concern and, um, the, it seemed like they stopped work for, for a few days or a week or something. And I had my signal tech contact the contractor. They're, they've dealt with each other for so long. They were waiting for one controller. Um, that's, that's not an excuse, but, uh, uh, they could be working on other intersections at the same time. There's going to be, uh, I think we resolved a snag on the state roads going through Muncie, like Maine and Jackson. Because we had to get approval from the state to use this certain box and this certain pole, which wasn't done before. But that's not hindering any progress down south and I will keep on them. I've had a, I've had a, uh, larger, as large an issue at Tillotson and Jackson. But, but, uh, the mayor has echoed what you just said, you know, we need to get these closed up.
It sort of defeats the purpose for someone in a wheelchair to get through that mess, but-
Exactly.
Uh, and then the other thing, uh, I noticed that the traffic signals have been taken down and I can't tell you when at Madison and twenty-fourth, twenty-third?
Twenty-second.
Whichever one it is.
Right.
Does that not have to be in our ordinance? We probably need to amend the ordinance to include that.
The Board of Works, the president can probably answer that, but we read through the ordinance and if we want to make any, uh, traffic changes, uh, like say remove a stop sign. Or something like that, we read it as we, the Board of Works has the authority to do that. That's, that's the way I read what I read and I could be wrong on that.
Mr. Hunter, could you check into that for us, please?
Well, because my recollection is there's a period of time and then-
The ninety-
Ninety days, yeah.
If we-
Well, I know, you know, when we, when we add new ones, there's that time period, but I wasn't sure about on a removal. And I don't know, and I'm, my guess is the one, and it's been years, the one at, um, Willard and Hackley has probably, or, uh, not Willard and Hackley, uh, Kirby and Hackley, I'm not sure about it.
That it's been approved?
That it's been approved.
Okay.
That the ordinance includes that, or it makes it a stop sign rather than a light, because that's been years.
I, I think we have two gentlemen in the room that can, can find out the answer to that.
At the next meeting, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Definitely will. The, the removal of the one at, on Madison is, uh, is a good move. This plan was put in place before we came in, but, uh, traffic counts don't wa- don't warrant, uh, you know-
And we're not saying-
A stoplight there, uh, you look for traffic flow these days. Yes, sir?
Uh, Mr. Campbell, I have to ask you about the pole. The pole.
What's the latest on the blog?
Can you just give us an update on?
Yes. The company was supposed to be here today, weather permitting, to start pouring their base. I hung around there a little bit. I even talked to the contractor.
Who is the contractor?
A and F, uh, Davis Construction, I'm sorry. I was thinking of the, the engineering firm, but Davis Construction came over. And A and F hired, uh, uh, their, their own lighting people to, to move that post. They've known since February. I'm not happy about it. I think I expressed that before. They also, we also have a problem with the sidewalks not lining up.
That was-
The, I'm, I'm just going to ans- I'm just going to tell you before I got asked that question. Once, once the poles moved back, uh, the city's going to do, uh, our own pole on the straight east. Because as anyone has noticed, the, the light pole itself is about ready to break in half. It's boarded up with, uh, four-by-fours holding it up. Well, AEP won't touch it till we get our signals off that pole. So, we've had that corner located and while they're, while they're in here moving that pole, we actually have a pole, a steel pole like that. Okay? They, they blame this on them not being able to find a pole. And, and me and my supervisor is not very happy about that. They've known since February that they, they needed a pole. So, that's just part of it. Second part of it, the original plans called for the sidewalks to line up with McDonald's. And McDonald's is not willing to give up any property at all. No right-of-way, nothing. So, somewhere in between the, the original drawings got changed. And, uh, by, uh, hand-initiated by a former engineer, that to, to widen that part of Tillotson. Well, it's, it's my contention, if we can't do the whole intersection and we can't get McDonald's, then, you know, why was it widened? Because once the pole is moved, we still face another problem. Because if people follow the curb line, they're going to drive right up on the sidewalk at McDonald's. So, that's what I meant with the construction, uh, uh, representative today about. The pole, uh, it, the pole I'm promised is going to be moved by the end of this week or very early next week. But the other problem we're trying to figure out, he, the, the, the contractor's willing to help, uh, uh, as best he can. And I don't know what that means. I think that means give us a break on, on some, the C-Man or curb or whatever we decide to put in there. But something has to be put in there. It's not safe. It's, it's too short of a, uh, crossover lane. And you will be having people driving into the left lane when they see a sidewalk ahead of them, saying, oh darn, I got to get over. That's, that's not right.
So, is it fair to say that that was an error in the, with the construction of CVS? Or was that because of McDonald's owned that right-of-way there?
CVS has nothing to do with that. Uh, CVS has their own construction crews that go around the country. They build the stores. They do the parking lots. And they hire, I do believe they do the landscaping also. Past that, w- once they got that done, they agreed with the City of Muncie to pay the City of Muncie forty-five thousand dollars to finish the curbs, sidewalks, and widen Jackson Street. Okay? Because CVS donated some right-of-way to do this. Well, the forty-five thousand dollars doesn't even touch it. The bill from the contractor to the city was sixty-five, sixty-six thousand dollars. And so, I investigated why. Well, the reason being was not enough concrete was specified, not enough was allowed. When he got into widening Jackson Street, each section would just crumble and there was, uh, not good fill. It's a soupy mix underneath there, so he had to go a little more and a little more and a little more. Well, that's where change orders come in and change orders should have been brought before the Board of Works and there were none on this project. But for the life of me, I can't, I'm, I don't want to talk about what happened in the past, but I'll just tell you the truth. What I know is why would we accept a check for forty-five thousand dollars when we know that the bid was going to be sixty-six to begin with? I, I can't figure it, so it's going to be, a- as this turns out, it's going to be fifty thousand dollars out of the city street department's budget over, over what CVS paid us. And that does not include what we're going to do with this curb. Because we can't have that curb like that.
Until the-
It's, it's an everyday headache for me. I, I just, I can't imagine it. Hopefully, it'll become, it'll be resolved in the next month and be past it.
Well, until, until the pole, pole can be moved, is there somehow that we can, or maybe you already have marked it so that it's very noticeable? I know that everyone thinks it's very noticeable, but as you're driving, I just would hate for someone from out of town to drive up onto it. If, can we put some-
Well, we, we wrapped it with yellow.
Yeah, orange. Is there a barricade on it now?
Reflective tape and, and there is a barricade there.
Thank you.
But, you know, it's still not safe.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
I'd like to say something. I spoke to you once about this, but I want to say it again. Um, I had not got any list to you about paving, but-
Right.
I was in the process of making some and every time I go by that street, it would be paved. So, I want to thank you. I have seen more streets paved in the City of Muncie in the last, what, since January than I believe I've ever seen in my entire life and I want to thank you for that.
Well, thank you. It's our goal to get back into the neighborhoods and, uh, improve some of our neighborhoods. That's where we, uh, live and raise our children. And, uh, that's the direct, or that's the directive of the mayor and I agree with that.
And it's wonderful.
Okay. I do have paving list done. It's not ready for publication yet, in case anyone cares. Or wants to complain.
I can.
We want to do it right. We need to, we need to do it right with the utility companies and the sanitary district.
Yes.
Okay?
I would just like to thank you, uh, Mr. Campbell, because you have really engaged the council a great deal regarding getting input on what streets need to be taken care of. You've allowed us to get out into our districts and ask and, and have a lot of public input and I think that's really coming in.
Need all the help we can get and I thank you for your responses. I, I get something almost every day. I like that.
Get your email. We're going to be using it.
That's right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure can. Please step up here and, step up here and say your name and address, please.
I'm coming, I'm coming. Herb Dudley, six seventeen West fifteenth Street. Told my neighbors I was coming up here today. They have an alley that runs between fourteenth and fifteenth street that, uh, with more or less the beginning of the six hundred block. My neighbors have complained now for a year or so about just getting it graded. And one of them was talking about, uh, the old boy that was doing it last year or a year or two ago, whenever it was done last, was talking about he was retiring. And they've called several times and every time they called, they said, oh, well, the equipment's down, equipment's down or something. But it's got large mud puddles and things and everything like that. I'm hearing about all this here, nice, wonderful paving, but you can't even get somebody to come through and grade an alley. I have, you know, I have to question.
There's a man.
I wasn't, I wasn't going to say anything, but after I heard all that, I'm saying, well, gee, we can get out and pave all these roads, but we can't get a grader to go down and, and knock the big holes out of the alley.
And you're right, because I've seen some alleys that do need it too.
And I know that my neighbors have called many times. Now, addition to that, almost right in front of my house, we had a sinkhole developed. And they came out and they vacuumed it out and it's all, it looks like the water line is, is- Creating, yeah. Big old vacuum coming down, sunk out there. It's going to be a hole like that there and you could see where it went. This is a regular sinkhole, right in fifteenth street, right in front of, almost right in front of my house.
My gosh.
So, they come out and they marked all the lines for the, for the gas and the water and everything like that. And then next thing you know, and, and one thing they didn't do, they didn't even put anything up to identify that hole for several days. And it was getting big enough where, I mean, you could have a serious drop. So, next thing you know, they come out. Filled it up with rock. Never dove, never discovered, never did any of it. So, I do appreciate having streets paved and things of that nature. But I really don't, you know, when I look around my house, my street, and I hear my neighbors, I don't particularly use the alley. It don't bother me. But I had two neighbors today telling me that they got a problem in front of that house.
Sir, when you say that they came out and did the sinkhole, who, who are you referring to?
Well, I think it was the sanitation district and they went and checked the, uh, the sewer line out and everything like that. And it was supposedly a clog or something like that. And then one of the guys had told, one of my neighbors had told me, he says, well, they said that there's a, a water line. And there's a, a, a break in the water line and it caused the sinkhole.
So, then they, they pretty much told you that there was, uh, a problem with the water company's stuff?
Something of that nature, yeah. You know, I, I mean, I can't-
Has the water company been out to?
Like I said, they came out and next thing I know, it took them a couple, two or three days, or whatever it was. Put a big old vacuum down there and vacuumed it all out and then they examined all that. Then they came out a couple, two or three days later and they painted all the lines, so, you know. And then the next thing you know, I come home, then I filled it up with rock, put a little bit of black top over it. It's done. Nothing's really been repaired.
And that, the water company's done that?
Well, I don't know who did it. I'm just saying, you know?
Okay.
That's not the repair I, I expected, so. I wasn't going to say anything. I was going to try to find out who I needed to talk to about it, but, but since they're talking about, you know, all this stuff, I figured, well, bring it up. talking about, you know, all this stuff, I figured, well, bring it up to you people too.
Now's a good time to bring it up, that's all right.
I mean, you seem to be able to get response, and, you know, thinking of this and thinking of that, but I got neighbors that have been calling and calling and calling about their alley, they ain't getting nothing. And this has been, last year they called, and it's still, a year later, and it still ain't been touched.
Let me ask you this, isn't there an alley over there that's paved?
No, it's not paved.
There, there was an alley over by in there that was paved?
Not down in my, well, I'm, I'm, I'm back behind the post office down there.
Okay, so you're farther down.
Yeah, I'm.
Okay.
I'm, I'm down there what you used to call Sandy Banks.
Where?
Sandy Bank.
Okay, Sandy Banks, yeah. Okay, it, it's, it's up farther from there.
It's right where the old railroad track.
Right.
Always.
Yeah, I know right where you're talking about.
I used to cut back and forth over to Wilson.
Right.
A hundred years ago, well, forty, fifty, sixty.
Right.
I, that's, that's, that's all I wanted to say, you know, I, I do appreciate, I think that they've done a good job on the roads and stuff like that. I don't, I don't have a super big complaint about that. But then again, I do have a little bit of complaint, especially with the sinkhole.
Right.
In the alley.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Mr. Campbell, do you have any?
I'll see what we can do.
Well, the gentleman came up for an answer, and the answer is, the grader has the transmission out of it. We got it running as fast as we could so we could get, get some alleys done. We've probably done 25 alleys throughout the city. The, 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 let's see, last Friday, no, the Friday before last, I beg your pardon, we had to go on a road call on that, that grader. The, he pulled the transmission filter off and it's full of metal, and it's being, it is being fixed, and it's, and we're not just telling people that our, we're not, we're not operating that way. The grader is broke down again. It's an ancient grader. It took four months to get an auxiliary drive case part made for it. They don't even sell parts for it. But you are, I, I, I know the name, I know the location, it, it is on the list. You know, we, we do one or two a day, depending on how bad they are, and I guarantee it, every day that grader's been running, we've been doing alleys with it, and there are tons and tons of alleys in Muncie that do need regraded. I will, you know, it's just, they're terrible, I agree. But as far as the road cut, sinkholes, I think the direction that should be, ask the question, why that's not repaired, and I can ask it for you, would be, start with the sanitation department and find out what they found out about that. I don't know if they put stone in, in an attempt to come back later. Sometimes they may put stone in to see if they've stopped whatever leak or sucking action that they, they might have, to see if, if they've actually fixed the problem. I don't know, I can't speak for the sanitation department, but that's a guess. But it should be repaired. That's all I have to say about that.
Duke, is there any way you could rent a blade to do some of those alleys? You know, lease, lease.
Mr. Dishman, that, that is a very small grader, and that, those are very hard to come by. At the end of this year, we'll look at our finances. That would be one of the first ones I'd ask to, to replace. You know, we're, we're working on last year's budget. It's not, it's not for me to come up here and ask for new equipment right away. We're gonna have to wait and see how, how the LRNS and MVH funds come in.
It takes a small grader for alleys.
Yes, it does.
So the county highway.
Some alleys you can barely get a car through.
Probably wouldn't have one, would you?
The highways is too big.
Too big.
Yes. It is. So I just.
Try to get that gentleman taken care of, it'd be appreciated.
No problem.
We, we know you would if you had the equipment, we know that.
He, he's close to the neighborhood that he's speaking of. He was working, he, he worked a little bit behind Ross, he'd done one behind Ross, and then we worked between 12th and 18th. Those were terrible because they were half, I don't understand this, they were half stone, half stone and half pavement, and some of them are half cement and half pavement, and some of them are half gravel and half cement. I, I don't, I don't get it. I, I don't know why, why that is, but.
The reason why the transmissions tore out, yeah.
Well, it, it's very old. I, I would tell you, it was made in the seventies, I believe. Yeah. Don't quote, don't quote me on that, but that's pretty old. Oh, we're good. Yeah. Yeah, I, I'm good with that. We're there to handle complaints, and, and I love to hear them.
That's all you hear.
I do, when, when, when the secretary gets someone that's really irate, that's the ones I want. Well, I appreciate, I appreciate it, and if you bear with us, we'll take care of you. Well, we'll do it.
Any other questions for Mr. Campbell?
Thank you.
Going on to other business, Dennis, I mean, Mayor Tyler, would you like to say a few words, or like to give you the opportunity if you'd like to speak tonight?
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening. Councilperson Gregory, I appreciate your comments on the curb cuts on South Madison. That's very frustrating for me to go out there on South Madison and look at those. But what's even more frustrating for me as a councilperson, or as a mayor, and knowing how important money is to us, is once those curb cuts are finished, there's still not gonna be any ADA accessibility on those sidewalks. And Martin and I have shared that conversation more than once. Makes no sense to me that we've put the curb cuts in and that before we've dealt with the poles in the middle of the sidewalks, all up and down Madison Street. It's just as frustrating if you go out on McGaughyard, right at Texas Roadhouse, where the city allows banners to be hung, advertising for different fundraisers and charitable fundraisers. The pole right in front of the Texas Roadhouse, that big, sits right in the middle of the sidewalk. Anybody that has a wheelchair has to have access out onto McGaughyard and back up onto the sidewalk. I asked Brian Cole and my street superintendent the other day to begin to investigate how in the world we ever allowed that to happen. Those are a lot of the issues that we're trying to deal with and fix, and, and we're going to, and because we are under a Department of Justice mandate on some of those. But on a good note, too, we've got a lot of good things going on, thanks to the council and others working with us on, on a lot of issues. Something that I'd like to report that we're, we're working on right now is, I'm sure most of you read the paper a couple weeks ago, where the Muncie Community Schools is no longer going to be able to continue their soccer program for our children here in the City of Muncie. I was able to facilitate a meeting late Friday afternoon with the Friends of Conlee Partnership, the Muncie Community Schools, the Northwest YMCA, and some of the parents and volunteers, along with Muncie Community Schools, the City of Muncie, and the parks, and Friends of Conlee will be taking over that soccer program. So we will be able to continue to have soccer. And the really nice part about that partnership, when we get it all done and we're able to make it public, is the YMCA is also going to be able to do some partnerships with the Friends of Conlee to expand those programs that we're, we're currently working on. So at the end of the day, I think that the soccer program will be much, a much more proficient program, and then we're going to be able to expand some of the other programs that we're trying to do in our parks. So all of those are, are good things for our kids and good things for our parks. I, I listened to senior citizens out at the UAW retirees meeting today talk about the parks and how important those parks were to them and for them to have access into them and be able to participate in things, so we're trying to get that done. Be glad to answer any questions, if anybody's got on anything that's going on.
Dennis, I wanna thank you for coming out to that neighborhood association in the morning side in McCormick last Saturday, and the rest of the city council people that attended that.
Sure.
That was, that meant a lot to that neighborhood out there, and they see that you guys care about that neighborhood when they, when they see your presence out there, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I appreciate that you, you and your fire chief and the police, the police officers were represented, fire department, they had the truck out there with the little kids. Kids had a blast on the truck, so.
I, I appreciate that. We, in my meetings that I've had with Jim Wingate, who is the, the chairman of the Muncie Action Plan, part of the neighborhood associations, is we've made it perfectly clear that our, our department heads are available for neighborhood association meetings to answer questions and concerns, and, and they make theirs themselves available on Sundays or any other day of the week if there's those types of meetings going on, and, and I think that's important. It's not hard to do, and, and it, it shows a strong partnership between the city and, and the neighborhood associations. And I, and I'll just echo what Duke has said, and, and the councilperson's giving him input on what potholes and paving and that. That makes our job a lot easier when we're all working together on those types of programs, so thank you.
You had a, you had a positive thing out there, Dennis.
Thank you.
People wanted me to thank you for.
Thank you.
Your presence.
Anything else?
On that note, Thomas Park, Avondale, they're having their ice cream social this weekend.
Yes.
May the 12th, I mean, yeah, the 12th from 1:00 to 3:00, so you're more than welcome to come out there as well.
Yes, we'd appreciate it, with the fire truck would be great.
We'll be there. We'll be there. Anything else?
Yes, I would like to, there's a couple things since we at this point. First of all, I'd like to say, when I first came, come in, I noticed that the corridor's been painted, looks good. The place is really looking good. It's just, a little paint can go a long ways.
I didn't pick that color, to be honest.
Well, I like it, I like it.
It, it doesn't matter. I could tell that something's been done. Okay, that's a step forward. And again, I, I would like to invite everyone out this upcoming Thursday, which is May the 10th, the, the Industrial Neighborhood Council or Association is having a meeting, and has invited that of the mayor, along with his staff, out to do some of the various things in which we're all talking about tonight, so thank you on that. And also, on May the 19th, the Whitley Neighborhood Association will be having a cleanup, and I just wanna throw that out there, volunteers are always welcome. So with that, thank you very much, and keep up the good work.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one quick word, the mayor reminded me, I was talking about this ADA. Back when I was getting around a lot better, I used to hike and run and bike and stuff up and down Madison, or not Madison, Memorial Drive, West Memorial Drive, in front of the post office, that telephone post you was talking about. Now, I don't know about getting to the steakhouse, some of these here people, the wheelhouse, they, but I know there's a lot of people try to go to the post office. And they made that there extra little lane to get off of the thing, and they just, post off, or telephone post, right in the middle of that there sidewalk, so if you wanna address one, I think that'd never be a department one, too.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak on other business tonight? Eddie, do you have anything? Mr. Bell? Mr. Gregory, do you have anything to say tonight? Any of the department heads have anything to say tonight? Other than say goodnight? I'm, I make a motion for adjournment.
I second.
Meeting adjourned.